All right, let's get started. Mrs. Durkosh, Dr. Bull call.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank? Ms. Greenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff? Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Student Board Representatives, Ally Meltzer?
Here.
Michael Lacotta?
Here.
Thank you.
Stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions, flag, United States of America, Republic, one nation, God, hope, liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 25th, 2019 Public Work Session of the Wissahicken School District's Board of Directors. And I'd also like to note that prior to this meeting, the Board met in executive session to discuss legal and personnel matter. And with that, item two on our agenda is a list of public meetings of the past month. And we'll get recaps of some of them later in our agenda. Item three, the list of upcoming meetings through March. And once again, looks like we have a very full slate. And item four is presentations. Jim, will you? Penner's?
Indeed, it's a pleasure. Tonight we have with us some representatives of Wissahicken Middle School. And as you know, we take turns with each of the schools sharing something that's either fun, or meaningful, or both. It is taking place at the schools. And tonight's theme is science. So it's an honor to introduce the Principal of Wissahicken Middle School, Ms. Beth Bauer.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for inviting us to present this evening. I believe that our presentation will be both informative and fun. We are going to highlight our science, part of our science curriculum. Mr. Landis is a 7th grade science teacher at the middle school. He's also our department chair. And he led some of the curriculum work that was done most recently. So we're going to highlight some of the resources that we were able to get to support our curriculum this year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Landis and four of his 7th grade students, who will be presenting tonight.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Great.
What we're going to do here is going to talk about the electronic probes that we just purchased through the curricular cycle, that we just had to get new equipment. And we are now showing you how we're using that equipment. Want to introduce the kids that came along with me? You have Gaye Lasseter? And Jessica Rapport? Julie McGarrett, and Olivia Seau. So they're going to show us a little bit what the probes do. But before that, we're going to need somebody's help. Wants to experiment with us. All right. All right, thank you.
The ex-teacher.
So the electronic probes that we have, as we said, are from a recent curriculum review cycle purchase. And they are taking our education to a much higher level. You're going to see that in just a few minutes. And their kids are going to demonstrate and discuss some of the things that we've done with the probes. Also, I wanted to thank you very much, the Board members, that you were able to fund this curriculum endeavor that we're using. And we're going to see how we can put this forth through the curriculum. This is our first year implementing this into our program. So the probes that we have, we have several. The one we brought today was the pH probe. We have temperature probes, we have pressure probes, we have temperature probes, we have the carts, we have gates for some of the physical science. But we wanted to demonstrate what one of them does today. So we're going to do an old-school and a new-school technique. You can see what I have up on the board. We have litmus paper, you probably... I'm old-school too with you. So if you see the litmus paper, how many of you used litmus paper before? Remember what you used it for? Testing a pool? Yeah, testing a pool is what everybody says. All right. That means you all have pools that we know where to go this summer. So testing a pool is our testing. And what did we do with that litmus paper? I mean, what was the purpose of using it for? Do you remember? Yes, the pH, correct. So we are going to give Ronnie... Can I step away for a second? Make it easier. All right, she's got an acid there. It's a simulated stomach acid. You can? Okay, great. It's a simulated stomach acid. It is 0.1 molar hydrochloric acid. And you have glasses on, so you won't need safety goggles. You're okay with that? Awesome. You guys need to put them on. If you don't, you too. All right, Ronnie, so would you dump that into... I'm going to give you the bigger of the two beakers here. And what the litmus paper does is it's going to test the pH of the acid. So you take a piece of litmus paper, and you can test the pH. And then there's a color chart on the roll of litmus paper that she can compare what the color is on the test strip to the color chart that's on the roll. And what pH do you think that is roughly? Yes, and you have that paper there to put it down there, so you don't have to put it on the table. All right, 1.0. So what the kids did, my students, is they wanted to find out what antacids do to acids. And what we did a few weeks ago is we did a research project. They had to come up with an experiment that they wanted to test. And then this is what they came up and they tested, which antacids were the best ones on the market. So you're going to demonstrate for us right now. Can all the... you guys okay to see that? All right, so Ronnie, what I want you to do is would you stick these two antacids in there? And while you're doing that, no, wait, here's the thing. You might need another assistant. As she puts that in, I'd need people to take the pH of the liquid as it is changing with the antacid. So anybody else want to assist? Yes, come on up. Thank you.
Other ex-teacher.
And you have glasses too, perfect. All right, so come on around. All right, so ready? As fast as you can, as you drop that in there, it's going to be a reaction that takes place. You want to take the pH paper and stick that in there and read what the pH changes. Drop them both in. Here we go. All right, take a pH read and go ahead, do another strip, as fast as you can do it. You want to see what happens. So keep them in succession, because you want to see how it's changing. So you know which one was the second one and the third one. It's kind of difficult, you're ripping them. We're making a mess. Oh, I'm noticing a color change is occurring. Now, can you tell me what the pH is as you're doing that? This is getting difficult, isn't it?
Tell us if your fingers are burning.
We're almost out of this reaction. You're at 3.0, ooh, it's changing colors. Where are we now? 4.0, it's going up. Because you said it was around 1, is that right? Exactly 1 or around 1? You sure? Okay, we're saying 1. It's changing a little bit more. Barely, but it is changing. So we're limited to how accurate we can be here. And this is one of the things that the probes is definitely benefiting the students. They are able to see dramatic changes that are happening really, really quickly. I think you're good. Yeah, you're good. So how many pieces did you test? Probably say about eight? Six. Okay, so you did six tests in a couple of minutes. And you found out what? So what is your conclusion to this experiment? It helped a little bit? Yeah, stomach... okay, so it's still probably working, but we didn't have the results we liked. Maybe we're limited by the paper, reading the paper, looking at the color. So now the kids are going to show you what these probes do. They're wireless probes. And they're going, and this is what their experiment was. So they're going to be talking about this in just a minute. But the wireless probes, the benefit of them is wireless, computers, liquids, we want to keep them apart. The old probes that we didn't purchase, but we were able to get this year that are the wireless ones are able to be set somewhere within the vicinity of their experimentation area. But they don't have to be tethered to the computer. So it does connect through Bluetooth. Are you all fired up, ready to go? All right, so at this point, I'm going to pass the mic. You guys better probably holding this and talking. And they're going to discuss what the experiment is going on here at this point. And you're going to see what the probe does. Olivia's going to hook her computer up here. So you can see the data that she's collecting as well. What you were trying to do quickly in their experimentation, they're going to do right in front of your eyes.
Our experiment was which antacid neutralizes your stomach the best?
Oh, there it is.
So there is 100 ml of hydrochloric acid in the beaker. And she and Julia placed in 10 grams of Alka-Seltzer. So as she stirs it, you're getting more accurate data through the probes and... You can... yeah. So you can see that the pH of just the acid is 1.5. And as she puts in the antacid, you can see that it is starting to neutralize. And neutral on the pH scale is 7. And eventually, you'll start seeing it level off. The chart on the left is showing 20 data points per second that you're getting. And it's a lot faster than using the litmus paper.
In a classroom setting, would all of the students have the same equipment?
So once the graph has plateaued, you can see that the experiment has stopped. And we use three other antacids, Roll-Aid, Tums, and Care One. And this is the graph of the experiments. And as you can see, Alka-Seltzer has the highest peak, which is around 6.4. And neutral is 7, so that means it's the best antacid.
Good to know. All right, okay.
Good having you at the table for our meetings.
Yeah.
No, but while we think probes are so important, because with only having a 45-minute period to record all this data, it's just because we have like a certain time limit and how efficient this graph solves this data compared to doing this, as you can see. Also, it's a lot cleaner and it's just a lot more time-efficient. And the fact that it can just graph those small differences, we would have to learn the process of graphing. Not saying that it's like a bad skill to have, but just compared to this, we might not be able to detect those small differences in the data and whatnot. So just like overall, this technology is new to us, but it's so beneficial that I think we should have more of these.
All right.
Yeah. So what you just, what you're looking at in the data up on the screen is they actually did this experiment. This is their data that they did in class. And we know that as gastric acid in our stomach, right? But this is simulated stomach acid strength that you would have. And you hear all these brands. So they actually played Consumer Reports. And they were able to put these into a simulation of, let's see, where it's strongest. And they kept everything as the variables were the same, same amount of acid, the same quantity. What they did in class is they actually took the tablets, being Roll-Aids and all those would not dissolve as the same rate. So they crushed them up. And they came up with all this idea. I did not do any of this. And this is kind of what is a neat skill that they're trying to figure out. How can we test things and keep everything else on the playing field, but the variable is going to be the type of antacid they used? And with their data, not only, when you look at that data up on the board, you can instantly see which one is the best neutralizer of stomach acid, but you can see how fast it neutralizes. And I know next time you guys have acid indigestion, without a doubt, where do you go? Alka-Seltzer, not trying... I don't work for them! Not... do you have any questions for my outstanding scientists here?
Yes, can you get us about 4 or 50 pounds of those antacids as we work on the budget?
Thank you very much for having us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, all right. Well done, well done, well done. Thank you, well done, well done.
I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to you guys. You all did a great job. Looked fabulous, I love the bow tie. Love the bow tie. And I appreciate you guys coming up here. I know it's difficult with all the adults. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. All right, good stuff. So it's a middle school team. Again, thanks for coming and showing us some of the cool things you're doing in your science class and how you're making good use of the technology and equipment that we are helping fund in your classroom. You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's going to be really exciting. Or as soon as you finish cleaning up, you're free to, you know, head home and get on with the rest of your evening. Science homework, probably, yeah, yeah. Thanks again, guys. Okay, next on our agenda is the first of our two public comment periods. And this one is for comments on agenda items only. And we have a speaker talking in reference to Agenda Item 15H1-3. That is Samantha Yagudi.
Good evening. Going to just keep it brief. My name's Samantha Yagudi. I'm at 1638 Clearview. And I just want to pose the question why it's noted within the agenda to just summarily approve the action items on 15... Specifically under Facilities and Transportation, Section H1 through 3. Just jumping ahead a little bit, they all speak to the elementary school revamps, for lack of a better word, that is being proposed. It just seems like it's putting the cart before the horse when the other problem hasn't been solved yet as far as what's happening with the schools, if they're getting moved, if we're getting another school, if we are changing things in regards to the overcrowding. And so I just didn't know if it might perhaps make more sense to table that or postpone that until the other bigger problem has been solved. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. And just to clarify, this meeting is simply to have an open discussion about the items that we're voting on next week. So we're not going to be doing any voting on any items tonight. It's just going to be discussion about it. But as we get to that point in the agenda, we will collect back on some of our discussion items. Okay, and see, so moving on, we are at Item 6, Report of the Board President. And I don't have any informational items, but I do have one voting item to review tonight. And it's our schedule of full Board meeting dates for next school year. And we're generally going to continue the structure that we put in place this year whereby the first Monday of the month is a voting meeting, which is preceded by a work session, like the one we're having tonight, one week before, for us to review and discuss all voting items. And if you look at Document A1, there are a handful of exceptions to that structure of work session followed a week later by a voting. For example, August 26th, we only have one voting, we only have one meeting that month. And it is a voting meeting, so it's not, as our normal structure, being preceded by a work session. That's primarily because with the start of the school year, that it wasn't really feasible for us to have a prior to that.
It's, that August theme is based in history here. We've had in the past one meeting in August. I mean, we could have, there's, the August 26th is a Monday. The following, next Monday thereafter is Labor Day. Try to avoid the Tuesdays if we can. Learn that there's some conflicts. That explains that one. We could go August 19 and 26, but a lot of people are...
Right.
Previously, if we can talk also about the time, previously, the work sessions were at 6:30 and the voting sessions were at 7:30. And I didn't, I wanted to propose, can we consider moving up all of the meetings to 7 o'clock? Start time of 7 o'clock.
Yeah, that's something I guess we can consider. If we approve the schedule next week, that's primarily for the dates themselves. And if we want to shift the times, maybe we might have to have a further discussion with the rest of the Board members to see if that fits the majority of us. I think in last year, we had a work session at 6:30 and then the voting session at 7:30. But there was some confusion, because then you had different starting times. And so we tried to standardize that voting time at 7:30. But if 7 o'clock works for the majority of folks, if to that, well. But the time we can change, I think what's more important is that we nail down the dates as part of this voting item. So take a closer look at that. And between now and next week, and have some more discussion and then a vote on schedule. Did anyone else have any comments or questions about the schedule for next school year?
I was going to just say that I think a lot of folks are away the week before Labor Day. Though I think the August 26 meeting is a little bit late, actually. But not necessarily. I can partially for myself.
Oh, we are back at school at that.
Despite Debbie and I's, our vote, yeah, and my vote, but we're in the minority. School is starting on Monday, August 26, so I think most people will badly... Oh, and also, I should note that this schedule is only for our full Board meeting dates. It does not include the what seem like endless budget workshops, facilities meetings, any other ad hoc meetings that come in throughout the... Yeah, policy meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Any other questions about schedule? Nope, okay. Then we're moving on to the Report of the Superintendent. Jim?
Thank you. I actually have no informational items tonight. And I also do not have any voting items later on.
Okay. Or to the Assistant Superintendent, Carrie?
Thank you very much, Mr. Antonio. So just a couple of things. One, I wanted to just report back on last Friday, we had a wonderful professional development day for our faculty and staff. It was a well-received day. Based on survey results, our teachers seemed to learn a great deal and are appreciative of so many of their colleagues who presented and shared information with them about good practice here in Wissahicken. On another note, I wanted to bring a little bit of a highlight this month to Black History Month. This is something we've reported on in the past. And I thought I'd set a little bit of a context for it. Black History Month actually has its roots going back as far as 1915. 50 years ago, after, 50 years after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States, Harvard-trained historian Carter Woodson and prominent minister Jesse Moreland founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, an organization dedicated to promoting the achievements of Black Americans and other peoples of African descent. Thanks in part to the Civil Rights Movement of the 1960s and a growing awareness of the Black identity, Black History Month emerged on many college campuses at that time with the same intent of promoting the achievements of Black Americans. In 1976, President Gerald Ford officially declared Black History Month to be a national observance. And so that brings us to the place we are in history now, where we continue the tradition of acknowledging the strong contributions of Black Americans to the history and the culture of our world and our country. So this month, and I always like to emphasize, not limited to this month, because we do a lot of diversity instruction in all of our curricular areas. But this particular month, we do highlight more of the Black history and culture here in Wissahicken and in our country. So across our elementary schools, just to give you a flavor of some of the things that are happening, African-American individuals and their achievements are certainly focused on through morning announcements, through class studies, through read-alouds. African-American inventors are particularly looked at in our field of science. Poetry is shared from our African-American poets. Famous quotes by African-Americans spark good conversation and discussion in the classroom. And notable moments in history, the Tuskegee Airmen, Dr. King's iconic "I Have a Dream" speech, are areas of study that children are particularly interested in. Even in our kindergarten classroom, the book "The Colors of Us" is shared. And it's a way of helping our students to understand why there are different colors of skin and why that is the way it is around the globe. The use of quilts and messages during the time of the Underground Railroad and the way of telling those stories. Biography themes of overcoming adversity and early child read-alouds featuring notable African-Americans. As we move to our middle school, things become a bit more sophisticated, where students read and analyze several stories, persuasive speeches, and editorials about famous Black individuals in history. They discuss current events and social issues through the lenses of the Bill of Rights, 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments. They participate in online discussion forums on the topic of Black History Month with other students beyond Wissahicken. They read and discuss editorials from New York Times about the Civil Rights Movement. Even in our music classes, the Keyboard Lab will feature a lesson on call-and-response songs, which originated in the African culture. They will also learn about Bessie Smith and have the opportunity to improvise jazz music on their keyboards. And if you go to the middle school and you walk into the atrium, there's a beautiful display of a display case of stamps and pictures of famous African-Americans and their accomplishment. Those are the things that are happening across our classrooms, K8. And I think our high school representatives were going to share some information regarding the studies at the high school.
Well, for some of our AP classes throughout the school year, we do a lot of stuff about like Black History Month subjects, but we usually incorporate it in APAL courses. We read "Letter from Birmingham Jail." And also in our new AP seminar course, we are again reading "Letter from Birmingham Jail," which is part of our Spanish package, which is part of our AP exam. And then in Honors History class, we do like a larger unit on the Civil Rights Movement. And currently, we're doing like murals about like the different movements that branched off that Civil Rights Movement throughout history and presenting like our findings to the class of their impact on American history.
Yeah, our art department has also been doing a lot to commemorate Black. I'm involved with the National Art Honor Society. And this month, we started this new project called "The Memory Project," where each member of the National Art Honor Society gets to get a photograph of an African-American child from an underprivileged in... Paint the photo and then eventually send it back. And we get to kind of... But they actually... And I, we're not done yet, but I feel like it's going to be a really... And also mentioned here, the Villanova Universe. And also mentioned here, the Villanova Universe Black Art Competition, I was able to be involved in that also. And what that entails is kind of looking into like a packet of primary sources from the Underground Railroad and the slave change trade and then being able to make artwork off of that. And also in AP US history, we recently discussed this past age relative to Black, talking about construction or move now, that played a role into where we are now. Discussions have.
Are you able to, either the students or Gary can speak to perhaps what's happening at the high school and the non honors and AP courses in terms of addressing Black History Month?
All right, so I think in all of our history classes, this is part of the natural curriculum, so it's not limited to AP. We selected out some of the highlights, things that were kind of different and unique, but these are certainly bred, woven throughout the curriculum area. And tonight, part of my effort here was to try to show you that not limited just to the history, but it also finds itself through literature, finds itself in the science classrooms, finds itself in the music and art. But most importantly, I think what we're, what we're trying to communicate is that our students, all of our students begin to see themselves in the world of learning here in Wissahicken. That we try to honor the very diverse community we have and provide opportunities for students to see themselves and to see others who look like them or are achieving any different ways. And high school did a nice job of sharing some of those things tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, guys. Moving on now, we'll go to the report of the board secretary, Wade.
Thank you. We have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped report of the solicitor, Jeff.
I have no report, but the separation and release agreement that we discussed will be in the personnel report.
Thanks. Okay, now we're going to the report of the board secretary, Wade.
Thank you. We have four, four meeting minutes to approve the facilities committee meeting, the work session, the budget workshop and the regular public board meeting with the various dates. Thank you.
Okay, please continue with the board treasurer report.
Thank you. We're presenting for acceptance and admitting the treasurer's report for January per document one.
Comments or questions about those? Okay, we're moving on to board committee reports. Asians, Ronnie?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, curriculum and technology, Ron?
There are, there will be several items, trips, a raft of equipment being purchased under the E rate, which basically the, the money that comes from your own bill, if you look at your phone bill, there's a, a small amount that is stifled off each month and this is where the money goes, not obviously not just to Wissahicken, but the schools throughout the country to increase the communications and technology that our schools are able to buy. This is the kind of stuff you saw here today. And then there were a number of contracts with special education, with special education providers.
Any questions or comments about the voting items? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on now to facilities and transportation, Tracy?
Thank you. So we, for our informational item, we're going to have an update on the status of the K5 capacity conversation. We did have a meeting on February 11th where we talked about enrollment projections, capacity calculation, talked about new debt, our capital reserve fund balance, and then some options that we wanted to consider. A lot of ideas were brought up. Some of them were expansion of the elementary schools, modulators, new construction, talked about redistrict. Talked about increased current class.
Well, I think my recollection of the meeting is kind of as you just said, I mean, there, there are a lot of ideas and a lot of options that I think are on the table. And I think working with administration, we as a board, to try to hone in on what those options are, I mean, there's, seems like, feels like a million things that we could possibly do to try to address the overcrowding situation at Stony Creek and what possibly might be on the horizon for some of the other schools. But again, I think fairly quickly try to hone in on what, on what are the most, the most appropriate or practical for to overcapacity. And that's going to come in the series of that we have, X ones maybe.
March 11th at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium.
Yeah.
At our last budget meeting, which was last week, we also talked about, just in terms of getting the budget completed, to also help expedite that process, which will help do our other budget items potentially in terms of what our spending capacities are.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, any, some of the options, well, many of the options that we're looking at, part of the facilities discussion have budget and dollar impacts. It's somewhat intertwined with the budget development process we're going through. But definitely much more to come still and a lot of work that still needs to be done to figure out a good solution for moving.
Okay, and then we also had, we will have some voting items next week were mentioned earlier. I did want to bring up a couple that were mentioned earlier. One, number one is the Lower Gwinnett Parking Lot Repaving Project. And number two is maintenance at some of the elementary schools. No matter what we do, these two things are absolutely going to need to be done. We are going to need our grass cut over the summer and we, Lower Gwinnett Parking Lot does need to be repaved. And then the, the third item was vestibules. So, oh, we're doing all the vestibules at all of the elementary. I know if we're talking about any kind of construction, that's not going to be happening within the next year, I, my opinion, the next year or two. But, and if we decided to do something today, you'll have to go through all of the planning, all of bids, you know, go into the township, that all takes time. We did put a plan in place a few years ago to make safety vestibules at all of our schools. My opinion would be that we would move forward with this Blue Bell and Stony Creek project. I don't know if anybody else wants to discuss that, but.
Well, I think, yeah, those, these projects have been on the radar for quite some time and they were, they were basically to bring these schools up to the same level of safety and security that the other schools are already at in terms of vestibule design layout. So, I mean, again, I agree, these aren't related at all to the capacity discussions or issues that we've been talking.
Right. And then the other, there were three more items that we were going to talk about for voting. One is the professional land surveying services at Stony Creek. Get a little bit more into that one.
Yeah, Wade, can you tell, tell us a little bit more about that one?
Sure. So periodically, we do actually try to get updated surveys. We haven't had one at Stony Creek in a long period of time. With the very real likelihood that we're going to be putting modulators at, at Stony Creek, probably one or two next year, we need to keep that possibility open and we need to complete a survey either for that or for something else that may be happening at Stony Creek and we think it's money well spent to have a professional survey completed.
And then the number five that we were, that we'll be voting on is the credit change order, basically for the Fab Lab, got a little bit, couple of things were a little bit better than we thought and one thing was a little bit worse than we thought. So in essence, I think it comes out to like a $4,000 good guy.
As Wade likes to refer.
I know.
Yes.
It's $4,000 good guy. And then the last item is, I'll look at H6. Is the acceptance of a donation of a memorial sculpture from the class of 1989. They're looking to erect this at Wissahicken High School Art Room Courtyard. All the expenses are supposed to be paid by the donors. There's a little blurb picture of what it's supposed to. So I'm going to start off with, I don't know about this. It's supposed to be high, weighs approximately pounds. I don't know if actually this, this is going to be, this is a. If we prove this, we're going to have about next year's class and the next class and this. I mean, I think it's a great idea. Wonderful drawing. I just, oh, eight feet high. Young man got his head stuck in something that looked like this. Not that that would happen, but I don't know if there's any other comment on this.
Yeah, I guess, I guess by way of background for maybe folks in the audience who haven't heard about this before, this has been kind of floating around, I think, for maybe a couple of months prior to getting as a voting item for us to consider. And in essence, the class of 1989, Wissahicken High School Class of 1989, having a 30th reunion, they're having a series of events that are going to be happening on our campus, I believe. And as part of their celebration, they wanted to donate to the district a specially commissioned structure, about eight feet high. There's a picture of it in the materials that have been handed out. I'm not exactly sure about the, you know, the artistic vision of it, but it's a pretty diffident looking steel structure that they wanted to have placed on our ground. And I think it's meant to honor classmates that have maybe sort of in memoriam to them. So, I mean, like with what Tracy said, I don't think it's bad sentiment, but when I first heard about this, my concern was that to approve something like this, which is not something that we typically do, in essence, like, kind of like an art installation to me, that's going to be put on our grounds. And if, if we approve something like this, that just sets a precedent that other groups, whether alumni groups or affiliated organizations, nonprofit groups, might have similar ideas of wanting to put some other memorial type structure on our ground. And that's a precedent I don't, I don't want to set, independent of what I personally think about the sculpture design.
We do have other memorial on our ground.
Yep.
Benches.
I agree. I think it's too big. I don't know how you go about assessing what the likelihood is that somebody would push it over. You know, and somebody get hurt or it crashed through a window. I just think it's big, too big.
I'm in favor of accepting it as it's described and as it's been offered. I think it's a generous offer for a good cause. I don't have any concerns about, I'm sure it will be installed safely and that would be confirmed by the administration and the school personnel. And if they decide it's not installed safely, then we might have a problem. But I, I expect students are still going to be in more danger as they drive back and forth from school than they are walking past this piece of public art, which I'm all in favor of.
I, I share Joe's concern about the precedent. I, I think that it's wonderful for classes and alumni associations to make donations to the school, either in the form of scholarships, certainly memorial benches and such. There is a precedent here, whether aesthetically I like the statue or don't like the statue is, I think, irrelevant, because again, there's no policy against it, but that's perhaps we need to look at our policy for installations in the future. But if the next group wants to present something that is 20 feet high, are we going to say, okay, we accept eight feet, but we don't accept 20 feet? There's just, it starts to become very undefined. I do think we as a board need to define more clearly in our policy what kinds of gifts we accept from alumni associations. And there we falter, but I think in the interim, given that there is no precedent for something of this size, I would have to vote against it.
Curious to hear what our student board reps think about the, the concept and the idea.
It's, it seems to me when I've visited other schools and I, schools that have been around for many, many years, there are lots of statuary, busts of Roman generals and George Washington and Ben Franklin. I don't, and these were not donated by the school itself, they were donated by alumni or, or graduating classes. I don't see the problem with us accepting this statue. The only thing we have to make sure is that, that the thing be checked by an engineer, that the thing is not top heavy and that it's substantially secured to the, to the ground and it's in an area that is not available to the casual passerby any more than we would want any of, of, of our statuary materials to be exposed that way. And, and of course, the cost of that, of that, the checking and the, the engineering would be on the donor.
All right, thanks, Ron. Michael, Ally?
I think that it's like definitely awesome offer that we have alumni that are willing to get a piece of art. I think it would definitely be good for promoting school spirit, because I know like, for it's like for cross country, we have alumni that frequently check in on our team and come to practice, like show their support after graduating. I think that would be really cool as a student body to be able to say that. I just wonder if there's like different size of the sculpture that we could get, like if there, is there like any way that they could bring it? But then it was like less of a size issue or is there a different location that may be a safer location for sculpture in our building rather than a courtyard right now? Is it like a location like farther away from our students might be constantly walking? We could think better of positioning the sculpture.
Yeah, I also agree with what's been said about the idea of being good and well received, but there also being kind of a need for regulation. As a student, I do see the merit in having like a donated piece of art in school. I feel like it kind of signifies a sense of that a lot of students didn't get when they actually become alumni as it was at Wissahicken. But at the same time, I completely agree with what's been said about their, some sort of like regulation and reversal scale as to what we can. And the precedent is very clear. So I think that I personally am a little bit worried about the issue, like implications of both.
All right. Thanks for your thoughts. Paul, do you have anything to comment on it?
I, I understand the, some of the sentiments that have been relayed tonight. I want to actually review the policy a little closer prior to our voting meeting. And I think some of the suggestions that the students had were, were good in terms of maybe some alternate solutions or areas of compromise that maybe we can go back to the proposers and see if there's some middle ground. For instance, different locations or reducing the size of the statue might resolve a lot of our issues.
Wanted to ask the student board reps, so the Wissahicken High School Art Room Courtyard, does that get a lot of traffic through it?
Um, I'd say no, definitely. The art room's kind of in a bit of a remote area of the courtyard. A lot of people actually art room.
Okay. So wouldn't be a high traffic area for students?
I feel like any of the courtyards would probably be a good location. The doors going into the courtyard aren't typically like the norm is not to walk in regard to get to your class, like usually like are permitted to, but usually not much to courtyards, class to class. So the courtyard might not, might not be as much of the issue, but the size still might be, because even like the. even like the visibility of it in the courtyard, it's not a large courtyard, so this would pretty much just take up the entire, which would like if we were to set a, of like, having smaller statues donated, you could fit several of them in that one courtyard, but also eliminate the issue of if your, like alumni groups wanna, for a statue, we'd have it in a good location as well.
Personally, on that note, I've spent a lot of time in the art room in my past three years, and all I can really think of is how the art about it. And truth be told, I don't necessarily know. I feel like kind of conferring with them about having it in a courtyard where people often go to landscapes and spray old paintings, everything like that, that's also a concern because it is a space that is utilized by the art.
Yeah, if you could, you could check our teachers, have the...
Yeah. I can let them know next, next meeting.
I don't know what the possibility is that we could just either postpone a vote pending a policy review by the policy committee. I know there's a policy meeting coming up some point soon, and I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, I believe that they're trying to get this in for the 30th reunion, which would be, in June?
Sometime in June. So my guess, I think they want to have a resolution, one way or the other, on this item, sooner rather than later, just so they can move forward with their planning for events.
I'm not sure that the board, notwithstanding all of its capabilities, will be able to develop a policy that would be a one-size-fits-all, or maybe a no-size-fits-any-situation policy that will dictate where artwork would be placed in school district facilities. I think a lot of the issues, what you heard specifically right now, are site-specific. So for example, if this atrium courtyard area only has X square feet under the circumstances, you may not be able to fit a statue of a certain size, but you may have a larger space in another portion of the district available. So I just think it is a site-specific determination, and perhaps the board could work out factors in the policy, take into account the size, scope, and the available space involved in, you know, the size and scope available for the structure in question. So I've seen a lot of policies. I have never seen a school district policy that dictates the size and scope of artwork in a school building. And I would say that notwithstanding all of the great abilities here at this table, I'm not so sure we can belt that, other than looking into fact. And the answer in this particular case may simply be, we think that the size of the statue is far too large for the space and will interfere with the use of the space, which is used by art students for painting and other issues. That, to me, is a very valid basis if the board is uncomfortable with it versus creating a complicated policy that I don't know will work.
I would just add one more factor, and that's maintenance going forward. You don't know what other items might be proposed going forward and what it would take for the school district to put it into the budget to keep it safe and...
I mean, we may require in the future, for example, if somebody donates something, that there has to be certain escrowed or donated funds to consider perpetual maintenance of the donated object. That is not an unusual request, though. That is a good point.
Well, I think in the past, what's benches, think something were to happen to a bench, maintenance of it, and same for a tree, well...
Yeah, I think, I think the key, I think the key difference here is that with some of the items we've had in the past, bench, a tree, there's some functional element to it, whereas this item is, there's not really a functional element, it's more of a aesthetic. And rather than focusing on the specifics of like shape or form or design of the statue, the weight, placement in a site, then I'd like us to think as a board about more broadly on principle, is this the type of, that we feel comfortable proving, recognizing that it will set a precedent for any other future groups or interested parties that might want to donate something similar, or anything of value or item to place on our grounds. So I think there are a lot of good thoughts and discussions, and clearly not unanimity of mindset on this, but we have another week to let it percolate, to maybe get some feedback from the art teacher and thoughts on the space that can be passed along, take a closer look at the policy, and we can discuss this some more. And as a point of order, I believe, like Debbie's question earlier, if someone could make a motion to table the item, and if there's enough support, then we could table the item. If not, then we'll have actual up or down vote. I got that right, Joe?
Do we know, is there any movement on the size? We're to go back to people donating it and say, okay, instead of eight foot, oh, five, four, something a little bit reasonable?
Has the statue been cast already?
I do not believe so.
Don't want to sound redundant, but it's not just, you know, the size, to me, is only one of the issues. It could be that at some point in the future going forward, there could be, whether this is four feet tall, that if there's something presented that is supposed to memorialize a fallen student, or it's a gift from a class, that we, as a board or perhaps the community, might find visually offensive, we would have no choice but to accept, as far as I'm concerned. And that is the precedent we're setting here.
Well, definitely more to come on this item. Tracy, anything else for the facilities and transportation?
Nope, that.
Okay. Well, before we move on to the finance committee, I'm gonna give our student board reps an opportunity to duck out of here. But appreciate you guys participating this evening and hearing your thoughts. Bye. Thanks. Hey, Finance Committee, David?
You are welcome to stay for the Finance Committee discussion. Thanks, Joe. The Finance Committee met last Tuesday, February 19th, for our second budget workshop, I believe it was. We discussed the differences between the general fund and capital fund, how we maintain the capital fund with fund transfers from year to year, how the capital fund plan might change. Well, we looked at the current version and how it might change if we have to build some new buildings or take out a $22 million loan to, some of that debt would be financed from the capital project fund plan, I believe. We also revisited the strategy to rebuild our debt service that was introduced a couple of years ago to methodically rebuild the debt service that we currently don't have. And then finally, we looked at the updated budget tracker sheet, which is keeping track of where we are and as we close the gap between our expenses and our revenues for the coming year, that'll be updated as well. Do you need to add anything to that? We have some voting items next week. Let's see, item 15I on the agenda, we'll be asking for approval of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit budget, the Wasickin contribution to that. We'll be looking for approval to waive the stadium usage fees. American Cancer Society Relay for Life will be held there once again, June 1st, 2019. That will need to be our approval. Be asking for approval of financing team consisting of Fox Rothschild as solicitor and bond counsel, and PFM as financial advisor for the purpose of obtaining approximately $2 million for the benefit of the Wasickin Valley Public Library for Ambler Library branch renovations, that have been the subject of previous discussions here, as they look to increase their accessibility in Ambler. And this has precedent in past instances where the school district has partnered with the library. Item four, we'll be asking for approval of financial reports, and then finally, approval of a list of payments that we routinely have to okay. I think that's all from me.
I just want to make a comment on item three, the financing for the Ambler Library, or the Wasickin Valley Public Library Ambler Branch. I'm happy to see that we were able to kind of work out the legal and logistical issues or concerns with helping the library out to fund that mission and the renovation improvements to the Ambler Branch. I think there's a lot of potential to increase, I think, the impact and the outreach that the Ambler Branch does for the community locally there. And some of the concerns we had about whether or not, number one, it was legal, glad that was resolved, whether or not it was going to affect our debt capacity. So I'm excited to see that we're at the point where we can have a vote approving to support the library initiative.
And I just wanted to, I don't know if it's been mentioned, but this $2 million, that all the costs associated will be paid by the Wasickin Valley Public Library, or repaid to the district by the library. So I just wanted to make sure that was, and that we are not funding $2 million to the library. The library is...
Right. It's essentially like a pass-through. I mean, in essence, by structuring the deal this way, the library gets to take advantage of the favorable rates that we can get from the debt markets. And there's really no debt cost to us for a...
So the next steps on this are, hopefully the board will approve this next Monday. The additional hearing that is going to be required is called a TAFRA hearing. It will need to be advertised and will occur at Ambler Borough. I think I mentioned this to the board in an update. The board does not need to attend that. The library team is here tonight. I'm sure they will be attending, as will the financing team. That'll be advertised and that'll occur. It'll be scheduled, advertised and scheduled as soon as the board approves that. Very likely at the next series of meetings for the board, I would anticipate that we'll probably be bringing back to the board what would be called a parameters resolution, which will allow the board to say that they are okay with the financing transaction, as long as it fits within these parameters. And then that will allow the financial advisor, in conjunction with the library and our team, to set a date that is advantageous for the bond sale, based on what's going on in the market, and then we would do so. And then as long as it fits within the parameters that the board has already approved, it will essentially be an approved debt sale. So those would be the next steps. Lots of meetings, lots of advertisements and those types of things, and that will hopefully be the involvement of the board. Joe, you mentioned the overall debt capacity. This won't affect our ability to borrow in total at all. It will reduce the amount that we can borrow this year in bank-qualified notes. That is at $10 million, so this would reduce it, if it is two, to $8 million. But in truth, I do not believe that the district will be going out to market this year, so it should have no practical impact.
I did have a question about item two, at the risk of sounding curmudgeonly. We have a lot of organizations that ask for waiver of usage fees. I saw, noticed in the letter that there, if there are any extraordinary expenses, that they would still agree to cover those. We normally, I don't recall seeing a lot of these for waivers for...
Yeah, I think you're correct, that the American Cancer Relay for Life is sort of an extraordinary event. As their letter noted, we have requested, Wasickin has requested in the past that they pay essentially the out-of-pocket cost of the district. So if we had to supply paper, toilet paper, paper towels, custodial or whatever, it's a cost of the district, we're gonna pass that along, and that's going to be reimbursed by the Cancer Relay for Life group. What we would be waiving is, there's a stadium usage fee, and that would be waived. And there's no actual cost to the district, it's just a loss of revenue cost as much as anything. And they happen from time to time. I probably brought a few, but you're right, doesn't happen consistently. And the agreement with the Cancer Relay for Life folk in general, that we would do this two years in a row, and then we've sort of requested that they then lightly use other facilities as well, so it's not always the district that has the additional responsibility.
Is this a student-led effort, or teachers are leading it?
Historically, the high school is very involved as well.
I think the total fees, wait, correct me if I'm wrong, that are being waived in this specific case, $3,100 bucks?
Correct.
We've done this in the past. We've had it here, been in Upper Dublin, rotates back and... But I know it's been going on.
My daughter was one of the co-chairs for Relay for Life for a couple of years, and she really enjoyed it, and I think it brings a different group of, from the Wasickin community to the high school.
David, anything else? All right, Policy Committee, Carol?
Thank you. We did not meet in February. I have no informational items and no voting items for this month. We are having a policy committee meeting at 5:30 on March 11th, and that's here in this hall, in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the Personnel Director, Kathy?
Thank you. One of the items that's in front of you is an information item that I'll be placing on the agenda for next, for next week, but it is just a list of the contracted service providers from GHR for special education assistance. We're required to have that information provided to the board. We did it for the STS employees, which are teacher subs. We also have done it for the first student bus drivers, and now this is a list of those employee, those individuals who work for GHR that are also working in our buildings.
So it's just an informational item?
Just an informational item. There's no voting on that. The voting items are our normal K1 items. In addition, there'll be school volunteer updated list, the new substitute support staff additions for 1819. There'll be an approval, as Mr. Sultanic talked about, an approval of a separation and release agreement, number 14-19, and approval for new extracurricular job description, which is a club that has been started at the high school called Poetry Club. And that's it.
Okay.
Any, I'm sorry, any new items that I will be adding? There are some already. They'll be bolded for you to see.
Report of Board Representatives. Tracy, anything on the extracurricular? And the MCIU Board of Directors will be meeting on Wednesday. I'll have an update at our next meeting after that. The MCIU Legislative Committee, Pat?
Yeah, last week's meeting was canceled, but we did receive an email saying that there would be a video conference on the 28th for, for the Legislative Committee, and I see that there's an MCIU Legislative on our agenda for March 20th, so I'm not sure if that's a, 28th is just placement for last week's. And it's just a call-in.
Okay. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ronnie or David?
Last week's was postponed, and on the 20th, Wednesday, the 27th.
After that, moving down then to the second public comment period, where we'll hear comments on any school-related topics. I have one registered speaker. Once again, Samantha, you...
Thank you. Part of the reason why I didn't say anything earlier when there was another opportunity to speak was because I was hoping that I was going to hear some really interesting dialogue between the board members in regards to the overcrowding issue that's going on. I know that the meetings that have been held at the Audion have had some significant thought and detail put together with graphics and a lot of discussion, but I don't hear you guys talking about it at all, in this setting at least. So it kind of leaves the general public questioning where you stand on all the various proposals that are set forth thus far. I know that there was at least just from reading the materials that there were six different options, so to speak, with varying costs all associated with it. I I heard more back and forth discussion about whether or not this art installation should be accepted or not, or whether we're going to spend millions of dollars on revamping our schools and the overcrowding issue. And I know that they're both really important topics to discuss, but I would like to see maybe just a little bit more time spent on on the one. So as I would just like to know where the board stands is redistricting it, and that's why we're not really discussing all these big topic issues at this point about, you know, millions of dollars of respending that needs to be made. I'm just curious. I know I have a child going into kindergarten next year. And I have two more children that are going to be in attendance at Stony Creek. I don't plan on having any more children, so we're good with me, but I know there's a lot of people that love our school district and all want to join too. So, thanks.
Thanks. Again, typically, we don't get in a dialogue back and forth with speakers at the podium, but in this case, I'll make an exception just to say that the topic of potentially redistricting additions, school construction, all that stuff, those are big, complicated, meaty topics, and so much so that we've created separate meeting opportunities to have very in-depth and detailed discussions of them, separate from our our standard full-board meetings. We have a full slate, a broad array of just sort of monthly business we need to attend to. So it's kind of by design. The heavy discussion happens at those facilities and redistricting. And I would encourage anyone who wants to get more direct insight as to where we're at as board members individually, as patient is thinking, attend those meetings. There's several of them that are scheduled in weeks, all advertised and publicly available. And we're trying to be as transparent and open as can. Through this process, as I think some of us said earlier, there's a lot more work and analysis that we need to do before we settle on a strategy for how to deal with this challenge for the district.
Can I just add one thing to that, Joe, even though, again, I know that we don't usually address this? Just to, I guess, also clarify that when we're having our work sessions, it's in anticipation of voting on items for next week. And since we're not at the stage where we're ready to vote on anything concrete regarding what to do to address the capacity issue, the facilities, meetings that we're having are helping us get to the place where we'll have something to ultimately vote on. And at that point, there would be more discussion in these actual monthly meetings. That helps clarify.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And also, just so we can clarify, so March 11th is the next facility meeting, 7:00 PM at High School Audion. We also have a K5 capacity conversation on March 20th. That is going to be 7:00 PM at Stony Creek. And then we have another one the following night, March 21st, 7:00 PM at Blue Bell. So we do have three meetings coming up where we will be discussing nothing but the capacity.
Okay, now we're on to Board Comments. Comments from my fellow board members.
Yes, I have two short ones. I neglected to thank John McGowan, who has been working diligently with the E-Rates, not only finding the needs that we have, but also squeezing every dime out of the E-Rates that it that we can so that our technologies are in the forefront of all the districts in the state. And also, as far as the library is concerned, I'm glad we were able to move to support the Wissickin Valley Public Library as our community, all of our community has the advantage of using the library. And it's if you haven't been there, it's a fantastic place. And I know more and more of our students are using it. I'm glad we were able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that then, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.